All right, we have the Council and the city manager joining us. Good evening, everyone, welcome to tonight's municipal meeting. As we, as we often do here in Long Beach, we like to recognize our special residents and folks and some special organizations that make our community what it is. Last night was the close of Hispanic Heritage Month, and with that, we have a certificate of recognition that we'd like to present to Ermandad del Señor de los Milagros. Right? Right. All right, I'll read this for everyone. Whereas Ermandad del Señor de los Milagros de Lagos...
I'll get it. I will get it.
...is a Christian fraternity with a chapter in the city of Long Beach at St. Mary of the Isle Roman Catholic Church. And whereas Ermandad del Señor de los Milagros is a centuries-old fraternity founded in Peru and boasting thousands of devotees worldwide. And whereas on October 28th, 2018, the Ermandad del Señor de los Milagros will celebrate its 28th annual procession of the image of El Señor de los Milagros through the vicinity of their parish church. And whereas October is celebrated as Hispanic Heritage Month, and the city of Long Beach is proud of the contribution of the Latino community to our city. Now and therefore, the city council and city manager of the city of Long Beach issues this proclamation in recognition of the cultural, fraternal, and charitable contributions of the Ermandad del Señor de los Milagros.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach, held Tuesday, October 16th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. We'll have the call. Councilmember Bendel?
Present.
Councilmember Pizdel?
Present.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice President Diamond?
Here.
Commissioner Ronaldus?
Here.
Let the record indicate the municipal vice city manager, Michael Tackney, the corporation council, Robert I. S. D. We will now have a move to apply.
Councilwoman Long Beach, please. There's a flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic with the same one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Once again, I'd just like to thank everyone for joining us for our second meeting in October. And we start off with the city manager's update.
President Aram Co-For, the city manager, because I would just ask for a... We have a moment of silence for Michael Diamond, a former member just lost his life earlier this week, or late last week actually, who was a member of our fire department as well as a New York City police officer. So I would just ask that we rise for a moment of silence.
Thank you, Commissioner Diamond. City manager, something?
This morning, the Long Beach Bridge was closed for about an hour due to a collapsed cable, cable digi line. One northbound lane was left open for cars and emergency vehicles. Altish and pit cable were timely visioned, and the whole lane will reopen. Ball Festival was held in County Plaza this past Saturday and Sunday. Hundreds of families attended to enjoy crab dinners, carousel, pumpkin patch, pedestal, music, hayride, and Casa Break. Thank you to all who, all those who came out and to our spirit for making this ball sale more possible each year and that wonderful cameo by your council president, Aram. Join us on Facebook and Twitter as we recount experiences and highlight recovery efforts six years after Super Saw was sandy. From October 24th to 31st, first use hashtag help me strong to share your experiences preparing, recovering, and rebuilding before, during, and after sandy. We may repost your photo and captions to the city's platform. In the wake of Sandy, the city worked to secure an unprecedented amount of funding to rebuild our infrastructure resiliency. Last week, FEMA approved over $20 million in additional federal funding through the Ascentation Grant Program for the city's critical infrastructure protection project. The project, expected to be completed by fall 2021, will protect critically endangered wildlife and vulnerable neighborhoods along the northern shore of the city by constructing new steel bulkheadings and backfill with clean upland fillers. Constructing an armpit slope around the existing hatchet's pipeline and installing tangent pile bulkhead adjacent to the Long Beach Bridge of Butlins and constructing a 33 million gallon per day pump station and stormwater infrastructure upgrade to mitigate acres of coastal type, coastal zone tidal wetlands. We want to thank our public who works upon, who continue its work making our city more resilient. This project is crucial to the city's future. If not moved quickly enough, we must go through big state and federal processes. October's Energy Action Month, month. This week's theme focus is on renewable energy. Last year, the city installed a 15 wide kilowatt, 15 kilowatt solar panel system and upgraded LED lighting at the MLK Center. A project completed in partnership with Total Free and the Esri Grid. In the six months after the installation and LED upgrades, the city has realized an average energy reduction of 33 percent. Attend the Long Beach Sun Closeup next Wednesday, October 27th, at 7:00 p.m. At the Long Beach Library, the Library Auditorium to find out what you can do to grow energy efficiencies renewables in much more. October, or as we like to call it, "Paw October", is also a time we'd like to remind everyone to license your furry friend. Licenseing your dog tells everyone that your dog has a good home. All dogs are in the city of Long Beach, and must have a dog license. If you haven't done so already, please visit City Clerk's office on the third floor or visit their webpage at www.homeachny.gov/city clerk. The Rec. Mexico Commemoration, the Long Beach Land Monsters Association leads the host of this year's ceremony commemorating the Rec. of Mexico with the unveiling of all these shorts by Axon and the Boardwalk at Lincoln on Saturday afternoon, Saturday morning, October 20th, at 11:00 a.m. The Long Beach Historical Society, 226 West Penn Street, invites you to a murder mystery play on Friday, October 26th, or Saturday, October 27th, at 8:00 p.m., or Sunday, October 28th, at 2:00 p.m. For more information, call 432-1192. Watson and Plaza presents Halloween in County Plaza on October 27th at 10:00 a.m. Come in costume and trick-or-treat around the plaza all day in the pool hoop contest, music, handcrafted arts, and crafts, and the free kids' art station. The past will pray Scott until 11:00 a.m. With that, I'd like to wish everyone a happy, healthy, and safe Halloween.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Tackney. I would also just like to thank everyone that came out from Ball Festival. There was, I don't know, dozens and dozens, a hundred children in the parade, which was a lot of fun. But also the management team and also all the employees of the city that really worked hard to make that weekend a fun day for everyone. So I just want to publicly thank everyone that participated. And with that, clerk, could you call the first public hearing?
Public hearing, resolution granting waiver about street parking requirements for premises 157A, East Park Avenue, Street 4, Harris Lawn.
Okay, is the owner of this business here? Come on up. Please state your name and address.
My name is 248 East Fourth, Vice of Long Beach, New York.
Okay. I see it's a Harris Lawn, but just stick to nature of your business.
It's a Harris Lawn, and of course, areas will do a little erosion and organic, so.
Okay. How many employees do you have?
Many.
Okay.
We will be more.
Hopefully, okay. Okay, and do you expect curbside deliveries?
Right now, I'm in the middle of a house, which is where the Congress expects my deliveries to be.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
What, this speaks next to the Nada Hama?
Yes, right.
These will be items, right?
Okay. Is there any comments from the public? No? Okay, seeing no hands, I would just like to make a motion to call the item.
I will.
We'll go ahead and call the vote so you can be on your way if you like. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so item of the public hearing, resolution granting waiver on street parking for premises 157A, East Park Avenue. Who will introduce and move the adoption on the side?
I will.
Who will say it?
I will.
Councilmember Bendel?
Unfortunately, I don't need your services. But notwithstanding, yes, and welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mendel? Councilmember Moore?
Welcome to our community, and I say, I vote yes.
Vice President Diamond?
I'll echo what Councilmembers Moore and Bendel said. Welcome to the community and thank you for picking Long Beach. And I vote yes.
And Commissioner Ronaldus?
Yes, we wish you much success, and I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And until the regular adjournments.
So item... Item number two, resolution reviving and adopting the Long Beach Employee Policy Manual.
All right, earlier this year, the city council law required all employee employers either adopt or amend their sexual harassment policies. Last week, the New York State Department of Labor issued corresponding regulations for employers. Therefore, the amendments to our existing policy are mandated by law. The changes don't alter very much an existing policy. In a nutshell, they require the amended policy to include, one, specific steps that our EPO officer must take during investigations, most of which are now being dated farthest. Two, enhance examples of the type of conduct that could constitute harassment, which doesn't differ materially from what existing case law now provides. This is more along the lines of a complication from existing case law. Three, amplifies the roles of outside investigatory agencies like EPOC, Equal Plaid and Opportunity Commission, and New York State Division of Urban Investigation.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm just pleased to see that we're moving forward with Governor Cuomo's position in terms of the sexual harassment portion. And my question is, I'm interested in finding out why we're the reason behind leaving out a time reference in terms of the complaints or an unworthiness of someone issues a complaint and the investigation takes place due to the sometimes time reference saying that investigator could have conducted this investigation and brought back to that individual within 45, 60 days. So I was wondering why we didn't have something similar in our policy.
What we've found over the course of years since we adopted this policy initiative in 2007 is that if one side doesn't fit all terms of investigation, sometimes they're, they're finished within five days, and other times it could be a period of months. And that's why, that's the reason why, that's logical, I think.
Oh, and my second question would then be, will we at some point consider language that speaks to, let's say, vendors or contractors? Let's say someone's in the building and they just happen to be a vendor and they become a victim. I know that the overall policy that the government has established also speaks and addresses the protection of individuals. Have we considered that as a city?
It's not in this current round of amendments, but it is something that I probably should be considered as well. I regret that actually that we bring that up during a future dialogue or something.
But thank you. Thank you.
I just have one comment. It's my understanding that the regulations also require additional training. Is that, do we expect that to take place? Is there a timeline for that?
Yes, it has to be completed within a few years. So we're hoping to have it completed well before that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Any comments from the public regarding the provision of adopting a new Long Beach Employee Policy Manual? No? Seeing no hands, next item.
Item number three, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement for temporary access and use of private property.
All right, so I'll ask everybody to bear with me. Here it is. As everybody is aware, the Army Corps project is ongoing. And at Long Beach, it raised $80 million worth of work, all paid for by the U.S. government on a $240 million project. In 2013, the council adopted a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Department of Environmental Conservation, the DEC, who acts as the state liaison in all activities of the Army Corps. This resolution was required as to be requested in the Dune project. The Army Corps would not come here without this resolution, which requires that the host municipality agree to acquire any private property needed given to the project. That's done primarily through the use of eminent domain unless the parties can't work it out. The subsequent partnership, written signed by the city manager and the DEC, provides mechanism and procedure for the city to seek reimbursement at the cost of paying a private property owner fair and reasonable compensation for any property that's acquired. In other words, for lands that are taken over, the Army Corps pays the corresponding cost, but only initially, and I'll return to that in a moment. In July of this year, we were approached by DEC and Army Corps, who informed us that a small, approximately 100-foot sliver of land owned by Leo Towers actually falls within city boundaries. The reason why this is significant is because that land is needed to complete the project. At that point, the DEC and the Army Corps invoked the city's legal application to acquire eminent domain if need be. What we then learned was that Leo Towers had actually been in negotiations with the county of Hensett for years before the city got involved. Apparently, all parties were under the mistaken impression that all Leo Towers, beachfront property, fell within Leo Beach. However, while approximately 85, 90% of Leo Towers property falls within Leo, the remainder actually falls within the city limits. That's how we got involved. Due to the city's prior experiences with eminent domain on the super block, however, we were initially impaired or blocking with the company's agreement, especially before the town had concluded theirs. Last month, the town did finally come to an agreement with Leo Towers and called it a temporary access agreement that allows the Army Corps to come onto the beach situated within the town boundaries and construct dunes. The key component of this agreement is that aside from providing immediate access, it also requires the town to take great effort to get a permanent piece on the property, which is basically another way of describing eminent domain. Unless that is the acquisition, could somehow be resolved out of the room. No sooner than the ink had dried on this agreement with the town did the DEC and Army Corps immediately begin to apply immense pressure to the city to sign an identity agreement. Therefore, over the last month, that's precisely what we endeavored to do, knowing that, one, we have a legal obligation to fulfill, and, two, we don't want there to be a breach in the comprehensive Dune system through which water will infiltrate during the next major weather event. With that being said, the city was able to negotiate one very important form of protection that distinguishes our agreement from the town's. This provision limits the city's legal exposure in the event Leo Towers later commences a legal proceeding over the value of the acquired property. In other words, in eminent domain cases, the way it goes is like this. One, the government acquires the property and then pays the owner fair and reasonable value for it to be obtained. In this case, the Army Corps is contractually obligated to pay that initial cost. However, if the amount the Army Corps agrees to pay winds up being something less than what Leo Towers thinks fair and reasonable, then it's the city who's pursued to breach that agreement. And this is where our lesson from the super block comes in useful. In that eminent domain case, what happened was that the city paid 13 property owners the value of their individual properties. The owners later sued, claiming that the super block should have been valued as a whole, that is, the settled value, and then split among the individual owners on a pro-rata basis. Under New York eminent domain law, they were entitled to be paid for the highest and best use of the property. And court ultimately found that the highest and best use was the settled value on the super block. That discrepancies, discrepancies now what appears on everybody's tax bill as the super block surcharge, that's what it is. Anyway, what this demonstrated is that courts can get very creative in finding the highest and best value of a property. In this case, we wanted to avoid a similar result, and this is how we did it. Leo Towers agreed at our request to not use the value of the settled parcel in any future proceeding to determine valuation. In other words, the city could be potentially liable down the road only for that portion of the project falling within a small sliver of land within city boundaries and not for any portion falling within the town. That prevents the super block scenario from repeating itself. Therefore, a decision is needed in light of, one, the town's execution of a temporary access agreement; two, the additional protections afforded to the city regarding valuation; three, the city's previous contractual or legal commitments; and four, the city's moral obligation to protect the safety and property of its residents during the future stores.
Thank you. I think that laid it out pretty well in somewhat later terms. All right, yes. Any questions from the, from the council for, well, I see you. Okay. Anyone from the public? Yes. Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Joseph Dayham, 700 Short. Good evening. Thank you very much for trying to move forward with bridging a breach in our future. I was wondering if anybody in the Army Corps, the DEC, or the contractors are here tonight? Are there any representatives? Oh, okay. I was just wanting to follow up. I sent an email to them regarding the wooden groynes that were put in our beach about 100 years ago. That the Army Corps, when they remediated the groynes, they put stones over it. And there was a debate if they should remove the wooden groynes first. And I still have yet to, you know, like, confirm response yet, or any response about that answer. And I had an email, I see, to the city council on that email questioning contractors. I would also like to ask if they, the contractors oversaw a project similarly, where they over, where they remove, put stone on top of 100-year-old lumber? And when that was taken? How, when that was overseen? And what the progress has been? How long since after that? Because I'm just kind of feeling a little anxious now that the dredging has taken place, that they're maybe rushing to cover up that work that was done a little prematurely. So my concern, if you know, is why didn't they mediate Maple and Pacifics, Brian?
Okay, I, I don't know, but...
Because Maple is, is right on the border of Leo, which is where they stay at.
Okay. And I'm wrong in correcting, but this has been asked before. When the original project was conceived back in the 90s or whatever it was, the groynes were evaluated at that time, and they made a decision at that time which groynes would be rehabilitated. Fast forward to when they actually funded it to do it, they still had to go by the original plan that was done in the 90s. At that time, they decided several of the groynes, including my block, was not going to get done. So we had those groynes stayed at this. All right?
That's correct. Okay. That's the only sense that that makes, because over time, those groynes have been even worse than the groynes that they did in some cases.
Correct. But they would have had to go back to Congress for reauthorization for, to do that, and that almost restarted the project. They said, what if that happened?
Could, could you speak, Commissioner, to why that is, though? Like, I think that's a question on folks' minds.
Well, the reason they did that, the original ones, was because of the funding. They would have to go back to corporations if it might have been...
Just funding.
They would have taken another five to six years. However, DEC has made a commitment in five years for the completion of this project. They will be back to inspect all the areas where the groynes weren't done to make a decision as to whether they should appropriate additional funds in energy to those groynes. There is an additional issue going on with those old groynes now. It's that as the sanding function has been done, some of the rocks are showing through as the beach spots level itself out. And we have to put the Army Corps on those, and DEC about that issue, and that they may have to mark it. In terms of the wood groynes, at the time when they found the wood groynes, where they were building new groynes, the Army Corps did have their engineering staff study it. And we did review that with our consultant coastal planning engineer from Florida. And they all kind of seemed to agree that the best bet was just cover them up the way they ought to start trying to rip out how deep they might be. You know, they could be 20, 30 feet to the ground. So the feeling was it was just better to leave them and try to remove them. So just on those two items.
And just to be clear, we had no say in that anyway?
We had no say in that anyway. We did try.
Right, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dayham.
Just for transparency, though, if we could find out if the Leo's still the project similarly were wooden groynes or... And I don't know if you can answer this, but I'd like to ask, in terms of the eminent domain for Leo Towers, would that mean afterwards possibly that each would not become, would not be private anymore?
That's right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public? I see Mr. Lester.
Does that mean I don't have to give my name?
I'm sorry.
Does that mean I don't have to give my name?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, well, I'm Lester, Long Beach. I have a couple of questions on this. You said that you guys didn't, or the city didn't know that they owned the property?
I don't know if I, 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 like, we weren't involved in those transactions. It was just taking place between the town and Leo Towers. We were excluded from it altogether. Some groynes during the process presumably were missing, survey was prepared. I don't remember, I don't really know. At some point, DEC chose to abolish in July.
But we check for it, but we all under the impression that all of Leo Towers fell within Leo.
There wasn't a week. They were, say.
Okay. I mean, because we've been collecting taxes on that property, you're all wrong. They're part of our tax law.
Its part is tax on 15 days.
Yep. And, and I don't know how we didn't know it and why it wasn't included when we were doing our project. And I also don't understand why there should be any eminent domain there because it's part of the city. We own that part of the beach. That's part of the city. So why the eminent domain?
Oh, well, no, it's owned by the towers, falls within the city.
Oh, well, no, it's owned by the towers, falls within the city. But Lido Towers part of the beach.
Only part of it.
No. Lido Towers, the beach, due to their property, is owned by Lido Towers.
Only to a point. And it's the same point, if you look at the southernmost part of, I guess it's, I'm not sure of the big building, eight hundred, I think, eight hundred shore growth, the southernmost part of that is the, is south of the Lido water. The part of the Lido beach, they don't own to the water, they don't own to the high tide line. They only own part of that. And that's why I'm wondering, since those, and if you want to look at the map, the tax map, what I'm wondering is because the dunes in front of eight hundred can't go any further north because of the buildings there, I don't understand why they have to, yeah, as to the M M domain with Lido Towers.
Well, this is the agreement that they're requesting.
Oh, yeah, I know this is a question, but, you know, like, just because somebody asks for money from the city, I don't see the need for...
Well, it may not, they may not come to that at all.
Right, right. I just, I'm looking at the map, I'm looking at the description of Long Beach from when Long Beach was first incorporated, and the description clearly said you go a hundred sixty feet east of Maple Boulevard. So there was no question at any time that we owned that land. So I just, it's puzzling. It's puzzling.
You know, and it's hard for me to visualize everything you say, Mr. Lester.
That's why I have to...
I understand. But this is, at the end of the day, this is what the D E C and Army Corps are saying, that they need to complete the project.
All right. I just wish we could question these things, because I hate it when it comes to money. And finally, I guess, you know, not knowing what the future's like, not knowing what the city manager's going to be like, this really should be a decision for the city council when it comes to the compensation, when it comes to the agreement. And yet, it's kind of been left totally up to the city manager under this resolution. Why? Why not the city council? Look at the last two paragraphs. Resolve that the city council of the city of Long Beach, that, resolved by the city council of the city of Long Beach, New York, that the city manager be, and he is hereby authorized, entered in agreement, for temporary access and use of the private property on Lido Towers coming in, in accordance with the terms and conditions outlined below. And it further resolve that said agreement shall contain such other terms and conditions as the city manager views proper. Really, that's something the city council should be in charge of, something the city council should advise.
This resolution is only for the temporary access, the acquisition of the land, that would be a totally separate provision. This is only to give temporary access for the construction.
Judge, it's something that the city council, it's really something in any of these agreements, and you know what happens to these agreements when you guys aren't watching over them. This is something that the city council should take in charge of.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. We'll take it under advisement. Anyone else care to speak on this item? Sorry? Uh, yes. Mr. Duda. Please state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. This relates to that. I know, I was working over the weekend, I noticed that between Washington and, I think, Lincoln? The beach has been tight, but I noticed that the dredge is out there. Is the dredge waiting to be done in Lido before they come back to Long Beach?
Yeah, there is.
And I know that part, they, they already have it done by the end of October, that because again, the weather has started to change.
The piping coppers, they were waiting for them to sit down, yeah, so they can go about it.
Okay, that's right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duda. Anyone else? Sure, Mr. Gusson. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, Jay Gusson. I'm just trying to get a handle on this. Mr. Ix Thies mentioned this is a hundred-foot wide piece of property, that's one dimension. What's the other dimension? I mean, are we talking about somewhere from the beach to Broadway, to the beach to whatever that first street in there, and then a hundred feet wide in east-west direction? Or what, you said a hundred, a hundred by ten, a mile?
It shows up on the server right here. I mean, I'm not sure of the exact dimensions, but it's a curved strip that looks like this comparison to the county's portion. This is the portion that falls within city boundaries.
So a hundred-foot wide strip that, let's say, runs alongside the effective paddle property that is counted with the city, if we didn't know that?
It falls within, it doesn't need to know that, we were, we were included in negotiations at the county, at the towers.
I understand that this came to light as a result of that, but it would appear that the city owns that property and has owned it for some time now. Do we know whether it's ever taxed on?
The city is bad. I'm sorry?
The city does not own that property. That property is owned by, ex, by Lido Towers, and they pay tax on it, as Mr. Lester pointed out. Now, they, we have to go within the domain, potentially, to get that property so that we can complete the Army Corps of Engineers, so we don't have a hundred-foot hole in the three miles of our beach.
Okay, I got it now. So there's, then there's all of our witness and permission to use that on your view.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else to speak on the last item? No? Seeing no hands. Onto the floor.
Item number two, resolution revising adoption of the Long Beach Employee Policy Manual. Who will introduce and move the adoption of the sign?
I will.
Who will second?
I will.
Councilmember Bendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aron? Item number three, authorizing the manager to enter into agreement for temporary access and use of private property, or to move the adoption of the sign?
I will.
Second by?
I will.
Councilmember Bendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aron? Will make motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Who will second?
I will.
Councilmember Bendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
I will.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aron?
Yes.
Okay, now, let's draw a good welfare. We enter our good welfare section of the meeting. Everyone gets three minutes of uninterrupted time, and we just ask that everyone maintain a composure and be respectful of others.
Good evening, Mr. Dean. Good evening.
Thank you for your work on the full festival.
Thank you. Thank you for the, just wanted, once again, to say thank you to this work on our project that's been a part of the meeting about the traffic control that is needed from New York Avenue to West Park Street. I also want to say thank you to the president of Ronald from Long Beach Festival, Ryan also.
Good evening, Michael.
And Ryan also. Today, Mr. Ryan and Rich Corbin came out and spoke with us. Once again, I'll just say, I believe that we should have stop signs at the two-way streets, east and west direction. We should have crosswalk indications following the stop sign, Mark Rock Street. And removal of the restricted parking signs, the hundred-foot parking, and installation of yield pedestrian. And he didn't suggest it today by, I don't know, maybe cannot block the sidewalks and take the stop at once. I think Mr. Ryan and Mr. Corbin indicated that they can't do anything about stop signs unless authorized by the city council. So obviously, the provision is gone, of course, they can't. So the city council's decision on that. Secondly, they did indicate that they can't put the crosswalks unless they're in traffic control. So, safety reasons, we need a way of getting across the street safely, especially in the morning and in the afternoon rush hours, and also other times during the day that traffic is happening, especially in summer time. We have to realize that this road was designed probably seventy or eighty years ago when the west end was a summer jungle community, and now it's a hundred percent year-round residential community. Now, I've heard a couple of things said that the intersection of Arizona and West Park is not as important as other intersection, so counting that is equally important, particularly in the section. Also, that, yes, the eventual, just like East Street, which has stop signs all the way from Lindell to New York, Long Beach Road, and then they're told that, well, there's more residents there. It doesn't matter how many residents, it's residential, it requires traffic control because whether it's one or two, are we waiting for the first person to get hurt or killed, aside from the fact that there's already been significant property damage to my house and property as a result of the accidents there? So I'm asking the council to move on the installation of yield possession signs, the installation, the removal of the parking, and the installation, even if it's temporary, while Nassau County decides, so what they want, what they want to do. I mean, you know, you can do the study. Why don't you do the study for the stop signs, maybe find out if there's actually going to be a problem with the traffic? I don't think there is, because, you know, stop signs in Atlantic Beach, and we must repeat them all there. Thank you.
Thank you. You had said that it's against moral, vehicle law.
The manual, the National Highway Traffic Administration, who promulgated the municipal uniform traffic control device management, and in that manual, don't mix stop signs and lights in the same car. Where the stoplight, when the stoplights end, or traffic signals end on Lindell, then it's solely stop signs. Years ago, we used that Lincoln lights on beach, and then the football laws, and we had to go one for the other, can't get to spurs, into spurs over. In the eastern Atlantic Beach, the last traffic light is at a highway every moment, the rest of the entire car, that has that sign, that's not under traffic.
And would that be...
Can I tell you that one, there's, there's stop signs and a traffic light on Beach Street. There's a stop sign and traffic signs on West Olive. There's a stop sign and traffic lights on, on, on East Walnut. I mean, you know, there's, on Lindell, there's a traffic light, on Grand, there's a traffic light. Probably for that street, on Beach Street, there, there's a stop sign. So, I mean...
With the exception of Long Beach Road, which is an exceptional road.
Well, 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 if there's an exception, then let's make an exception.
Let me just ask a question. Now that we know that there's been an analysis of the corner by our internal officers, why don't we just get a subservive report from them, which includes some suggestions? I'm not a traffic expert, so we can figure out the appropriate steps that we can take. If we've already done, the analysis has already been done internally, I think it might be a good opportunity for us to actually have the information before us so we can move forward or not with regard to that corner.
I'm not sure of proper analysis by an engineer was done. We don't have any, at least, probably. Usually, we rely on Nasser County Traffic Engineer, so I think we can look into it, but I don't think there is a traffic study.
One, maybe one thing I just have to say, I've heard this not only today, from Matt Ryan and Rich Corbin, about, well, the traffic would be slowed down. I said, yes, that's what we're supposed to do, slow them down. And, you know, this is, this is not a thoroughfare. People go through there to avoid the undeveloped park line. Why are you punishing the residential community on West Park Avenue from New York, Nevada? Because of traffic from Suffolk County, eastern Nassau County, and making their traffic more important than the residents that pay taxes in Long Beach?
I think everyone, everyone recognizes that there's a trouble spot there, and it's, you know, lots of congestion. Both John and I live in the west end, and I think everyone travels through there, and completely understands and knows exactly what you're talking about. Can we request from Nassau County engineers, and I know we have your information, so can we reach out and get a response, and they will come down and go?
We don't have to be traffic experts to understand that this is an area, this is about safety. I've had the opportunity to go down there, I sat with Mr. Dean. People are racing down West Park Avenue, and at this point, I don't even think a stop sign is a solution, because we all know, you don't have to live in the west end to understand, people look at stop signs and they keep going wherever you are. I live on the east end, I see people do it all the time. So this is not about the stop sign. I think at this point, we need to look at an actual light to prevent people from moving and from speeding, because ultimately, some child is going to get hit. I was standing there for several minutes, I waited there for about twenty minutes, I saw young people struggling to get across the street, there were young people who had bikes, they were trying to figure out what to do, there were adults on the other side trying to figure out how can I cross the street without being hit? We need to take action. That's it, we just need to take action.
I just don't cross the sidewalk every day, every single day.
A little more pragmatic approach is what we did on Park Avenue, and we brought in the consultant, the engineer, to signal timing, sign the lights optimally, so that twenty-eight mile hour pressure not only got me through the road faster, at a slower speed, and it can cause a park area for precision. It's a program called Stop Signal Timing Optimization Program, that maybe make the county come down, work at sequencing the lights on in the park area, so that they produce the desired result versus what they, how they would happen.
I understand that, but there's a significant distance between Delaware and New York Avenue.
Right.
And even with the timing, the light turns red here, the light turns red there, there's still traffic moving westward and eastward. And then by the time they move, the lights turn green, or there are nothing sequence, one is green and one is red. But the bottom line is, you and I both know, one outage and a red sequence, and what is this? Takes somebody to come up to the council and request and sequence it again?
Thank you, Mr. Dean. We'll be in touch with you. We'll follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, city council.
City council president. Name and address.
City manager, so. I'm pleased on how this meeting went, because it does get annoying for someone who goes to most of the meetings to sit back and hear people argue over stuff that shouldn't be. We should be discussing things that affect our children, our speech, which we did tonight, and without interference of people who just want to twist the way the meeting is going. And I just want to commend you for doing that, and hopefully, we can continue to do that. And we have a great police commissioner too, and we have to keep calm down. We did pretty good this summer, it wasn't too bad. But we have to think of our children, they're the ones that we should be here for and do for, and provide tow barrels to recreation and parks, and we're doing that. And those are good things, and that's things I like to commend you on, and hopefully, we could talk more in that direction than all the arguments that shouldn't be in front of the city council. So I think we're in the role, and I want to be a part of making this thing work, and I think people in faculty can do that too, by just respecting you, kind of. Let's face it, for the one, and we, Democrats have been in control, so we must be doing something right. So I hope we continue to do something right and answer your questions, and look forward to making Long Beach even better. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schlitz. Uh, let's just say this one. I'm sorry, I'm really, I'm calling that.
Oh, sorry. It's a right for the citizen.
Name and address for the record?